I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Mr. Wanneman. Appreciate you being here for the Governor's Assistant Goldenale City Council for May 15, 2023. Sandy, would you mind giving the roll call?
Sure. Steve Johnston?
Here.
Dave Jones?
Here.
Mark Meeker?
Here.
Ellen Casey?
Here.
Annie Hall?
Here.
Milo Molling?
Here.
From Missy Delberto. On to girls.
I haven't had any contact with Delberto. If there's desire to excuse him, then we would need a motion to excuse him from attending this meeting.
I move to excuse Phil.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Delberto onto the list from attending regular meetings at Goldenale City Council for May 15th. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
Aye.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay.
We have something in our rules about missing so many meetings, unexcused meetings.
You're right. But every time I ask, it gets approved, so.
Well, that's why I voted nay tonight just to...
We don't have the public, to close public comment for agenda items. What would you, if there's anybody on the line that wishes to make any comments on the agenda items themselves, not anything else, then please let us know. See none, we will go on. We don't have a public hearing tonight. We have an agenda that has been amended to include additional items for council business. Do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda?
Oh, Mayor, I'll move to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the Goldenale City Council regular meeting as amended and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll go into presentations now, and there's really interesting coming up. So we'll ask Commissioner Dan Christopher about the Great Goldenale Area Enrichment Council.
Sounds interesting, right?
Yeah.
So I'll try to keep it churchy sweet for you guys. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You all know me as Clickatuck County Commissioner Dan Christopher, but what I also am is the founding member of the 501(c)(3) nonprofit called Goldenale Community Enrichment. Goldenale Community Enrichment was formed to help you help our community. We plan to do that through a variety of projects, from community cleanups to building a splash pad to revitalizing the Vol fields and other community development projects our citizens still desperately need. Today, we are here to tell you about the Goldenale Community Cleanup that we have planned for Saturday, June 3rd, from 9:00 to 3:00. We have partnered with Republic Services to facilitate this cleanup in two phases. One phase will be the Republic Services has generally offered to accept one load of trash up to three yards at the Goldenale Transfer Station from each household in the city, again at no charge. Phase two will be members of Goldenale Community Enrichment working with anyone willing to volunteer to pick up trash at the curb of any Goldenale resident without the means of hauling their own trash. We will also be doing this free of charge. Any residents without the means of hauling their own trash to the transfer station just has to get it to the curb by that morning, and our volunteers will do the rest. With that, we all know that a community is only as strong as its volunteers, but we also know that Goldenale is filled with people just like us that want to make a difference in our community. We are asking for your help in spreading the word to anyone with a truck, a trailer, or working arms that wants to help make a difference. Please have them show up at the courthouse by 8:45 on June 3rd for a briefing, and we will break into teams. I do want to let you know that Republic Services has also generally offered to provide lunch for the volunteers. Up to 60 lunches. We're hoping for a big turnout. So I want to personally thank Republic Services for being, excuse me, for being such a great partner to Clickatuck County and the community of Goldenale. In closing, I want to say that we all want to improve economic development in Goldenale. We can help do that through community development and making our city beautiful. So I encourage you all to spread the word, help your neighbors, and hopefully some of you will also show up at 8:45 and help us get to work in making Goldenale an even better place to live. With that, I give you a handout, and if there's any questions, I will take them. If not, hopefully you can all pitch in or help pitch in or tell your neighbors or in some way help us facilitate and make this first one, hopefully, a many a success. Republic, I'm guessing, will be donating somewhere around $18,000 of in-kind services to this, so hopefully it goes off that hitch and people aren't complaining too bad about long lines at the transfer station to dump their free garbage. We'll see. It's Goldenale.
Do they need a coupon or just in the city?
Transfer station, I wanted to make simple and easy, and anybody just show up, as long as it's three yards. If you show up with a giant 20-foot trailer totally full, they're going to say seven yards, and we'll give you a credit for three. But, and then any of the volunteers will probably have signed letters from me posted on their vehicle to get them in as many times as possible, and those will be handed out the morning of at the volunteer. And lunches from Via Pignos, where the name of the new Italian restaurant thing is in town? Oh, we'll be providing lunch again, paid for by Republic.
Is there limitations on the type of garbage?
Yes and no. Just the limitations the transfer station has. So when you go to the transfer station, you're limited to four tires. Obviously, if we're picking them up at the curb, volunteers can take four from there, four from there. We're going to be able to show up with more than four tires. Household hazardous waste is accepted at the landfill or at the transfer station, so is appliances. There's not a whole lot that's not going to be there. We're hoping to get at least some of the volunteers. Republic is trying to get some of their own workers to volunteer for this, and they're also working to try to get it through management to pay some of their staff to attend our event. So I'm hoping to get some of them to actually work up at the transfer station, actually help unload, and hopefully make that a faster transition. If we can get enough people involved, heck, I will do that and get Maggiot juice all over me. It's important, so. That time, be people show up. And I guess my, I worry that either nobody's going to put trash at the curb, and we're going to have a bunch of volunteers with nothing to do, or everybody in the community is going to not want to go to the transfer station. You're going to have rows of garbage, and three volunteers show up, and I'll be working for the next 84 hours straight trying to clear the garbage from your curb. So I hope it all goes without a hitch, but I guess that's kind of what this is. I'm warning you. We originally planned to put dump boxes behind the courthouse and have people dump and facilitate there. I just, I didn't want to worry about closing streets or any of that, so thankfully Republic.
Is there someone that people could contact to say, "I'm at a certain residence, and could you come by and pick up my..."
Twofold. Ideally, the ones we want to pick up are those that are elderly or disabled. If you have means or if you, you know, if you have two hons of civics in your house, you're obviously not going to the transfer station. So for people like that, I would say just put it out at the curb. If you need more help with that, there's a number on there that you can contact, which is Solid Waste. We did, not only is Clickatuck County Solid Waste Partner here, so is Senior Services Volunteer Connections. So hopefully, they'll be working with senior volunteers and reaching out to the senior community to help them even get the trash to the curb. Because to me, I, when I look at the houses in Goldenale that have a lot of accumulation, there's usually not pickup trucks out front. Those people can haul their own trash. It's the ones that don't have the pickup trucks. So those are the ones I want to really try to focus on and see if we can get at least some of their stuff moved. And go through the first year with trial in there, and hopefully next year, we can literally get onto their property and help them get the old refrigerator on the side of their house to the front. So small bites, and this is step one. We are still working on splash pad. More to come in that and the fall, hopefully, following the presentation, so.
Commissioner, this is just the kind of effort that's going to make a big difference, I think. We're certainly supportive or passionate.
Thank you. Any other questions? Perfect. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
The next presentation is Clickatuck County Volunteer Services. Isaiah Garcia is going to present that.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the mayor first. I've been contacting him, you know, back before through email. We were actually trying to figure out something with the Goldenale Cleanup as well, but Dan.
Yeah, neither one of us knew the other one was coming, so.
Yeah, so he did a good job.
He's a double graver.
Yeah, we don't have to do all the work. He did it for us. Well, thank you, Council, for having me here today. My name's Isaiah. I'm the Volunteer Connections Coordinator for Clickatuck County Senior Services. That's the name of our program, Volunteer Connections. We are under the umbrella, again, of Clickatuck County Senior Services, which is a county department, and our bosses are commissioners. So our program is funded not through county dollars, but through OTWA, an area agency for aging and disabilities southwest Washington. If I said it right. They gave us a grant for two years to basically start this program from the ground up. And I was hired, I was the first, you know, coordinator to get it going. We're now on our 15th month through the program. We've been able to help seniors all over the county, not just Goldenale. You know, from one end to the other. We have different volunteer services that we give out. We have what we call visitor friends. These are folks that just go out and volunteer, you know, their time to socialize with our seniors, especially getting out of COVID. There's a lot of mental health issues going on, depression. People feel lonely. Some of our seniors don't have the support group, family, the nuclear family type of dynamics. So visitor friends, just go out, chat with them, watch TV, play video games, do whatever, you know, seniors do. And we sure appreciate them. We have what we call neighbor friends, too. These are folks that actually go and help them with the mail, help them pick up the prescriptions, help them fill out the forms, help them with technology, smartphones, tablets, the internet, et cetera. And we also have what we call land hand friend. I find that this type of volunteering is the most in demand. We've been able to help out community cleanups just in one day during the Bitchin' White Salmon Cleanup. We took out 21 truckloads of debris, not at the curb. We actually took out the trash from people's homes, loaded it on a truck, and then unloaded it. Some of these folks are in danger of losing their home insurance. They're in danger of their yard debris catching fire. So we removed a lot of fire ladders, so we did a lot of, we've done a lot of fire hazard mitigation from last year to this year. We've taken out trucks and trucks and trucks out. We've also donated dozens of cords of wood that these folks had that they're not burning anymore because they're just older, they're not able to bucket, split it, and put it in the fireplace. So we were able to take that out and give it to other seniors as well. We have been able to go out and mow their lawns sometimes. The lawn is higher, their grass is higher than I am. I'm pretty sure a lot of folks have seen that. And it's not because our seniors don't want to mow their lawn. They just can't. They don't have a family member to come along and mow it. We're not a landscaping service. We don't do like weekly maintenance because I don't have enough volunteers. But if it's a health and safety issue, we'll go out and cut down that grass just to, you know, where it's close to the ground. Hopefully, it won't grow anymore through the season, but we do one or two cuts. I also recruit the volunteers for the nutrition side of Senior Services. I recruit the volunteers to do the home-delivered meals, which we deliver thousands of meals a year. We also serve thousands of meals on our three sites, Goldenale, Lisle, and White Salmon. So that's part of my job, part of Volunteer Connections. We also recruit the volunteers for culinary assistance, dining room assistance, and then we also do special events, you know, like the cleanups. We've been posting that on social media and letting people know that we're going to be helping out with the cleanups. We need trucks, we need trailers, hands, and all of that. We go one step beyond the curb. We actually help seniors take out the trash within their homes, in their yards, and then load it on the truck. Obviously, some of our seniors or disabled are not able to load their refrigerator or get rid of the yard debris. So we do all that. It's an exciting program. We're up to over 70 volunteers countywide. Most of the volunteers are on the nutrition. We find that people like routine, so they like their days that they volunteer. Land and Hand is more of a, you know, based on needs, so it can be any day, any time, et cetera. So that's what Volunteer Connections is in a nutshell. And we're hopefully, we're able to partner up a little bit more with the city of Goldenale, local organizations as well. We're always looking for volunteers and funding. Yeah, so we do take grants, et cetera, because it is only OTWA. We only get the grant from OTWA, and then we got another grant from United Way. Dan Souter donated the money that was left over on his campaign. All that little stuff helps. I've found that sometimes, like for example, last year, we had a client where he didn't have water, electricity, sewage, rodents in his fridge. He was eating half of that. So we were able to get that going, but sometimes we were stuck because we didn't have a $10 piece, you know, for the plumbing. So we had to wait for the client to come up with the money, you know, or ask around, stuff like that. And situations like that would be good to have the financing so we're able to just get it done, get these folks up and running and stuff like that. And also volunteers, you know, sometimes it's just, I get the call, and I'm just looking for volunteers to connect with them. So that's it. Hopefully, I didn't run over time. I didn't give them time.
Do you have a business card?
I do.
You didn't ask me for a business card.
I got you.
They know who you are. I got business cards, and then I also have, I don't know if they gave you the pamphlets, some handouts.
Are you able, if we get a lawyer and scared to tell him we need to meet with you?
Yeah, yeah. I'm always meeting with people.
Well, you know, we sent out a lot of come first letters, and this year, we just sent out a bunch on weeds, but we do know some of them are senior people, and we'd like to sit down and talk with you. Maybe we can work together on that.
Sure, sure. Love it. What's your name?
I'm Pat Manion.
Pat?
Yeah.
And we also have a website. It's ClickatuckSeniorServices.GoldenaleCityDigital.com. And people could go in there, sign up to volunteer. They look at opportunities. They could log in their hours. If you have somebody that needs help, you can fill out a form. It's a Google form that comes to me, and it has the client's information. So there's a bunch of things that we have set up. So if you ever have some time or you're interested in volunteering or sending people over, just go to our website, and it's on our county website already, too. You can hit it in there, so.
Isaiah, where is your office?
My office is at the Services Building, Suite 101, to the right. On Mondays, no, on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. The other days on the Pioneer Center.
Great. Is it here, Mr. Wanneman?
Yes, sir.
The local conservation district partnered with DNR to implement a program called Wildfire Ready Neighbors. So we'll go out and make home assessments, identify things that need to be addressed around the house, and we're anticipating that there will be funding this next fiscal year to co-share out some of that work. So I have some information here for you to share with some of your seniors that might help you accomplish some of your goals there.
And I'm familiar with them. I was talking to Charlie. Is that... Oh, excellent. Yes. So we do a lot of this, so if we could partner up with you, and if you have resources, I'd be even, well, great.
And maybe when we set a meeting, you or one of your staff members attend?
Yes. All right. Well, if that's all the questions, then thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, sir.
Any comments or questions?
These two presentations were extremely, extremely important, and it's obvious that they're focusing on seniors and folks low income or folks that just can't do it, which is absolutely necessary. We need these kind of programs. And we really hope that the city can work with them to help facilitate these programs and at the same time, address the folks that are capable of keeping their places clean and are doing it. I mean, we've got rules, we've got codes. And Pat, I heard Pat mentioned somebody sent out letters as far as weed control recently, which is one way of addressing it, but it's been met with futility as much as anything. It just kind of plies. And I think those are the folks that are in noncompliance more than these seniors and the folks that we're talking about tonight. And I would really hope we would be able to focus on that. We discussed it a lot over time, and we need to continue to address it. Thank you.
There's a massive difference between can do it and won't do it.
And won't do it.
And that's sometimes where the friction comes.
And those are the most flagrant users and the most numerous.
Any other comments or questions? I hope we're all showing up at both of these events, if we can, if we can. And I always say, "Oh, I'm going to be there and find out." That's not even possible at all. But the intentions are to support both of these programs as much as we can. Nothing wrong with volunteer service at all. We're going now to department reports and thank your commissioner and thank Isaiah as well. It's really enjoyable, people to work with. Department reports will begin with Pat Manion for Public Works.
So just for information, the city has some tax liens that the county will be setting up to be auctioned off that we'll see. Basically, most of our liens are either for code enforcement issues or back utilities. And the county's starting to pull quotes on them because of back taxes. So we'll see how much money we get back, hopefully some of our lien. But I think there's four of them coming up. I just wanted to pass that on. Oh, so a few, I think, if I recall right, Mike told me, Mike is the new code enforcement guy, 33 code enforcement letters have gone out on for weed abatement. This is the first phase of letters. This is a friendly reminder, and they have so many days to respond, and then we'll go to stage two. And in stage two, we will offer them to come in and sign a voluntary abatement agreement, which what that does is we give them a time, we try to work with them and say, "Well, how long can you get, before you can get this done?" And as long as it's a reasonable time, then both parties sign the agreement. But they understand when they sign that agreement, basically, if they don't fulfill their obligations, it gives us permission to enter the property and take any basic issue ourselves. And then we will bill them, and if they don't do it, then we'll leave the property. That's just a new process for here, but you know, some people are going to be willing to do that, and some people are not, so. Then, you know, the other ones, what we would have to do is go to court and get what's called a warrant of abatement to enter the property to maintain, to go in there and take care of the issue. And then it would be the same process as that we would bill them, which will cost them more because now we're going to incur legal fees going to court. So they would be, you know, and we'll explain that to them upfront. You know, it's better to enter the voluntary agreement because in the long run, if you go correct the issue, we will have to go get a warrant of abatement from a judge and enter the property and clean the problem up. Yeah. Question. What is a reasonable amount of time? You know, obviously, we want everything cleaned up before hot summer, and it seems like this year is probably going to get a lot drier quicker than it did last year. So we would probably be looking at, by the time we go through phase one, which I think, what do you get, 15 days?
Something like that.
So we're looking at probably a total of 45 days. So by the time we get a voluntary payment agreement, we're going to look at 30 days out of giving them an opportunity to get it taken care of, and if not, we will go get a warrant of abatement to clean it. Okay. Very good. That's a major improvement. That's the, yeah, that's the, for some reason, Jeff didn't want to use voluntary payment agreements. I've found them very useful in the past when I did code enforcement 20-some years ago. They're a good tool because it's, you're sitting down with them, you're in your work, you're trying to work with the property owners and say, you know, you know, it's, there's a difference between garbage and somebody's clutter. You know, as long as the clutter's there and it's not rat harming hazard or fire hazard. If they want to keep their yard cluttered, that's fine, you know. We're there for looking at fire danger, public health issues, something that's, you know, harboring mosquitoes or rats or mice. That's what we're there for, and try to get that stuff cleaned up. The, and then we have had a few, which is good. We have, which is an indicator that development's still moving forward inside of Goldenale. We have some land use variances and conditional uses and some short plats coming on. And from what I understand, this is happening a lot more frequently than has happened in the past. Is that correct? So that shows that development is occurring out there and still want to occur, which means the community's growing. We have, the Public Works crew has been out spraying weeds, and they're actually patching potmills as well, as well, inside our roads. And they're starting to grade why there's still moisture in the ground, trying to get all the roads braided and alleys braided where there's some moisture left in the ground and get them braided off, and then, I'm not sure, but I have to ask Doug, but I think after that, he plans on sterilizing the alleys. Because it's like weeds, right? Would you sterilize the ground if some weeds came out? So the incubator building project is, the building's up. There's just, if you guys get an opportunity, I encourage every of you to go up there, walk through it, look at it. It's turned out pretty nice. They should be rounding that up pretty quickly. Not that we needed an extension, but finally, which would have been nice to know, the Dana's project, finally, they got a response back from the federal government on May 5th that says we can extend the projects out to the end of June. So we went ahead and applied. We didn't really need it, but just in case something popped up, I figured we had an extra month and a half to deal with it. And same with the, well, the shoreline management plan, on January 19th, we will have another public hearing on that. That will be the final public hearing.
January?
Or January, or June 19th, sorry. June 19th. I can't read my old notes. June 19th, we will be having a public hearing on that. That should be the last one. We were waiting for a response back from the Park Ecology. As you might remember, several months ago, this went out for public comment. As you might remember, several months ago, this went out for public comment. We did not get anybody here, but we did get a few public comments, writing in some public comments back from some state agencies. They've taken that information and incorporated their comments of what they thought was relevant in the final draft. The final draft's off Department of Ecology right now, and we're just waiting for their response. But we got to get this finished up by the end of June, and then they're aware of that, because that's what the grants are. So it's a tight line, but we should be fine. I'm still waiting on a response from Public Works Trust Fund on our contract. The gentleman that we were working with had a personal issue and went on leave and Old Dale got forgot about until I finally, because he just went, answered the phone call for like a month and a half. And finally, I called a different office and tracked it down that he was out and tracked down somebody who said they will take over this project for us. And I wrote her again today, because it's been two weeks. And we, you know, this is a $3.3 million contract. We need to get this going. This is for replacing our water lines. One of the first lines that we'll be replacing is the old line coming in from the golf course. And that one's been giving us a lot of difficulty this last year. It's blown apart a couple times. It's the old, is it Bloodview?
Bloodgood.
Bloodgood. Blood grid, and it's an old steel rapt line, and it is, it's like stone pipe thick. It's really thin, really thin. We got to be really careful when we're working on it. And then the airport fuel project, that'll be closing also at the end of June. It's rarely close to being done now. We're just waiting on some wiring. Our project manager, which is Courtney McFarland on that, has been talking with the contractor. There are professional dispute over qualities. It's not an argument or anything, but the contractor sent some quantities in, and they may have used those quantities, but did they come to the city for a change order? Which is unacceptable. They can't do that. So we're trying to work out those details right now. But we were, we did pay about half of it, I guess, about half. It came in three different invoices, so we paid one invoice and we didn't pay the other two invoice, because that's where we're having quantity issues. So tentatively, on June 5th, we should be meeting with Angela, who's been doing our rate study. And she is ready to give a presentation on rate study to the city council. June 5th, Angela, rate study on. That's, I was just on texting with her today, and that's what I asked for, and she said she thinks you can make that network, so. We had, I reviewed it last week or, no, the week before last with her. Went in and we modified a few things that were not correct, and she was going to go back and work on those. And she said she's got those done now, so we're already looking for her.
Is that something that we shared out to council ahead of the meeting? Like, not this Friday, but we have to, a lot of.
The presentation?
The, the study result, the actual study?
Well, she's going to be there to go through it all with us. I mean, I can see if I can get a printout of it, you know, if that's what you're asking for.
Is there a document that she's?
I haven't got that document in the final draft at this point, but I can answer.
Oh, I thought you had corrections that she just finished making, but that was.
We did that on Zoom meeting, so. But, yeah, I assume that will be recorded.
Comes out of this.
Yes, they will, yeah. So what there are is there's some options there that council needs to address and give us direction on how we want to proceed. That's there. And once we have that direction, then we will schedule a public hearing and go through the public hearing process, and you will have, take that input in and decide how you want to proceed for it at that time, with which, with what option.
Be great to have a draft or even final of the report ahead of the presentation.
Okay, yes, I agree. So, and that's encouraging. Sounds like there's a light at the end of the tunnel at this point. That's pretty much it.
Pat, our wastewater or water treatment fellows got another award from Department of.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think I mentioned it or.
Yeah, well, they, they did, last year they got an award. This year, they're, they were recognized last year as the top rider operators in the state. This year, they didn't reach that level, but they reached the top ten level. And anybody in the top ten gets recognized through a letter to their employer. I think this is their fifth or sixth year, seventh year in a row. I mean, they do a really good job out there. And that's very impressive to keep that level standard for that many years in a row.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you. Oh, one quick comment. This is a little bit off topic. It's completely legal. There's nothing we can do about it. But a young man came in today and wanted to know if it was going to bother anybody if he come in and set up his camera and videotaped the meeting. We can't stop that, but he, he wanted kind of a consensus that it wouldn't make the council feel uncomfortable.
Nancy already knows that.
Right, Nancy.
But he didn't want to make anybody feel uncomfortable. He wanted to just.
What's his background? What's the intention and purpose?
He's trying to get into the media business, so. I think he's trying to do his own, I don't know if it's Twitter or one of those, like all podcasting.
It's good for Nancy to have some competition.
I think we'll wear sunglasses.
While we have the Public Works Department head, committee meeting.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, three o'clock. Wasn't, excuse me, wasn't there another meeting? I have it on my calendar. There was a TIF meeting for tomorrow, but.
Well, yeah, I think that's what we were planning on, was having Todd to the TIF meeting, was it?
Yeah.
We can, yeah, I'll call Todd and make sure.
That's, that's on the agenda here tonight.
Well, no, that's, well, yeah, this is the contract for the feasibility step.
I thought Todd was going to be here tomorrow at one, and we were going to go look at some of these sites.
That's right.
Is that not happening tomorrow?
Yeah, that's why, I'm sorry. I was thinking it was three, yeah.
At one o'clock.
At one is what I had, but I, I didn't schedule it.
I'll call him to verify if he's here. I was thinking it was three.
So.
So what are we doing now? We're at one o'clock or three o'clock?
Maybe both.
Well, we'll just do it in line with Todd.
Okay, and then follow up with the committee.
I'll call Todd first thing in the morning.
Okay, so we're meeting at one then?
Okay.
All right.
Okay, great.
And then, yeah, I think that's it.
Go to the police department, Sergeant Mike Smith, unless you have more.
No. No. I like this a lot. Lately, we've had an increase on drug activity calls. We did have a fentanyl overdose yesterday, which is fatal. So we've seen an increase of that. We've been trying to increase our patrols in the parks, different things, make contact with people. We've got a lot of calls from people seeing, going in and out of the bathrooms. We're trying to work with Public Works with that. It's still kind of a struggle of, you know, how do you block the facilities when, you know, you have to be able to do that. We have trespassed some people from the parks out that were doing some drug activity, suspicious activity. And as you know, with the new Bush state laws, that's going to expire in July. So we're hoping, depending on what the governor does, what the state does, we'll be addressing that probably in July to give the city to either rewrite some ordinances for drug enforcement so we can actually enforce that again. And so just to give you guys kind of a heads up, start thinking that avenue of what the city wants to do to, you know, restrict drug use in the city, possession, things like that, that we can use for misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor crimes. It was still on felony level, but it would give us some teeth and be able to enforce a lot more of that. And that'll be in July. One of our cadets at the academy got injured, and so they are out right now on LNI. Hopefully, it's only for a couple of weeks. They're going through some other tests. He's had a concussion. During some defensive tactics stuff, and so hopefully, it will be just a couple of weeks. We'll recycle that back into where they left off in the academy, and they can finish up those, graduate a couple of weeks after the one that's still there. So we're still just waiting to hear from that. Calls have still are pretty much neck and neck with last year's was, which is from the year before. And so we're still, still got extreme calls compared to the years past, but we're still kind of shorthanded with the people at the academy and with the chief retiring. And so we're, you know, down three, so we're still trying to find any recruits. If anybody knows somebody that wants to become a police officer, send them my way, and we'll get that process going, so. Other than that, that's about all I have to say.
Steve, comment on the drug situation? I've seen, I've seen more reports all the time regarding this. And some cities are doing it through resolution, through ordinance, through whatever, making these drugs illegal, like I say, through resolution. And it gives law enforcement more of an upper hand to deal with it. But the city has to, through process, do that, just make it illegal. And I don't know what the process is. We have to look into it. But I'm seeing more reports all the time where cities by themselves are taking apart themselves to just for flat.
We'll have to find out. I'm not too sure what the process, but we can find out.
Right.
I guess we're, like, and we can reach out and find out what some of the other cities are doing as far as their ordinances that would likely as you need.
Yeah, and right now, everybody's is kind of up there, because they don't know which way the state's going. They keep prolonging it. They're still, I don't think they want to deal with it. So they want to kind of bring it up, say, yeah, we're, we're in the legislation part. We're going to fix the problem. And it just keeps you closer to that deadline. And so with, you know, you got to get prosecutors on board with that. You can't go to felony level, so even with the municipal's codes, it'd be a misdemeanor, there are citations, or it could be arrestable offense under the misdemeanor statutes in the city codes. We can, you can outline some of that, and then we have to get our local prosecutor on board. And so we're still trying to work with him to get things in place, to be ready in July, because we're assuming it's not going to get, take care of at the state level, and they're going to dump it on each city. So it's just, my point, it's better to get it a whole lot before it gets to that point, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the cities have that authority. They have that level of authority to address these kind of situations. They don't need the state's blessing to do it. I mean, we do have a certain amount of time, or a promise, and we can run our cities.
We're going to have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, because it is a huge issue. We don't know what this, if there's going to be a solution legislatively. And there are a number of cities that already implemented something, and they actually have their resolutions on the MRC website. I read through some of them, so if the chief and if Pat can look at some of those and then come back to council and let us know which direction to proceed or what our options are, it'd be better to have something in place at that time.
Access to Mr.?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's, like I say, that some of them are gross misdemeanors, some of them are lower level, but it would be good to be prepared for a solution there.
Okay, like.
Well, what's I get? Sorry. No, that's fine. I'm just saying, the legislature's going to have a special session on the 16th, which I guess is tomorrow. And how long they will be there to resolve the drug situation? How much they will work on that? I don't know. We'll just have to wait and see, but like the comment, we'll just have to wait and see. Hopefully, it won't wait too long.
And also on the, on the issue with the parks being used for drug activity and campaigning, we talked about this last summer. We still haven't gotten those signs posted. I had a chance to talk to Mike about that on the enforcement side, like without the postings, it makes it more difficult to enforce. I'd like to see council, city, however, whoever needs to make that a priority, to get that taken care of. Because, you know, we need to support our officers and enforcing that to make it safe and convenient space for everybody.
And also, along in mind, we did have a call today of a cougar sighting at the River Creek. So maybe even post unofficial game does have some signage that kind of just advises people to be aware of what to do if they come across an animal like that. And so, you know, we kind of go call by call with those, but maybe just educating the public of what is, you know, we are in a rural area, so, you know, we have a lot of people moving into this area that's never experienced that. And so, you know, maybe just good for the city just to put that out there for more education for them.
No camping, and what else?
There was no, well, I had to work with Mike on what the language, what they need for enforcement. But I think it was no camping and like, maybe some restrictions on the hours of when it's.
Yeah, it'd be nice. I mean, they're cop posted there. The sign's older, kind of faded. Probably could use a little revamp and something new that brings people to, you know, whatever we want to do with the ordinance to keep people from camping. I mean, I guess we do allow that for permit, so I'm not sure the terminology the city would use for, you know, it's prohibited except for permitting events or.
Yeah, just look over the information, and when you, if you come down and talk to me, and I'll help you put it in the right format to get it.
Talking about Econe and World War Two Park.
Yeah.
And Horn Brook and Little Lake Field.
Yeah.
And probably the pool area plus, is that county property?
That's county.
The Observatory Trails.
I believe that the Observatory has newer signage up there, because it's parking now. And that kind of changed things when they made that into a park, into trails. And so, because it used to be, back in the ancient days when I started, that was trying, you couldn't park up there. You know, there's a lot of other activity, but they've opened it up, so there is, you know, parking. There's no holding up camping up there, but, so.
Do you guys remember last year, Gordy came to do a presentation after we promoted signage up there, trail, parking up there?
Oh, that's right. You realize you got, this is so got drugs. They have a very clear message right at the hospital. They're hanging out, nor can, free. That's a real indicator of a very serious drug problem.
Yes.
After they have the remnants of whatever they're using for drugs left in the parks in the first place.
Yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree with Lauren. I mean, anything we can do to enable our police to enforce, you know, the rules in the parks, so the parks can be used for everybody. I mean, I get complaints all the time that people are sleeping in the bathroom at the World War Two Park. And, you know, it's unfortunate and everything, but when people take up residence in the restrooms, that makes it so people can't use the restrooms. Reports about the baseball fields down at Econe Park just being a nonstop problem in the night, activity of drugs and other things. And whatever signage we need to do to make some of our police officers have some power to enforce.
Well, if I can add to that, along with the, you guys mentioned the baseball fields. Now the city kind of took over the baseball fields and that. There was an issue down there, so now they shut the gates. So law enforcement has no access to our vehicles to get down there. So as soon as I go one way in Econe Park, whoever's down in the park sees me coming, and they walk into the river, they're gone. So there's no access, easy access for us. We've brought this up several times throughout my career, and when you come down to Econe Park, there used to be the road that goes over the pool. Now they've double gated that, because they don't want normal people going in. But we have no keys to that. We have no access to that. So for us to enforce to get down there, I can't expect an officer to leave his car at the top of the hill, walk through that without all of his equipment, and then arrest someone, try and bring it back if there's more than one person. How do you translate that to, you know, get the enforcement down there? We're kind of, it's a dead end.
I didn't know that. We need to fix that.
So maybe something to bring up with that.
We can fix it. It's a city park. I think we can just address it, make sure they understand it.
Because right now, you have the fence there, where the old little, it used to be the two separate entities. Now, you know, it's a bad parking lot anyways, if that fence was just gone, it was a big parking lot. You'd be able to get in there a little more efficiently.
We need to fix that.
Yeah, we need definitely, that's our separate, we get locked out of our own property. Yeah, we need definitely, that's our separate, we get locked out of our own property.
Probably. You know.
Yeah, let's see, we'll see what we can do to resolve that.
I think we can fix it.
And the thing about the signage, it's an important part of the process. I mean, you can have all the codes and all the ordinances and all the laws on the books, but without the signage.
I don't see it.
You know, you're at a deficit already, but I, and I'm not too sure, but I think you, like, no trespassing. You have to have your property posted before.
Not to arrest on trespass, no. I can arrest somebody on trespass without a sign.
You can.
Yeah, they're, because you're private property, you know, citywide, it's a little different, because it's city property, you, everybody has, you know, the public has access to city property.
Okay.
You know, it'd be like if someone comes in the council meeting, they have the right to come here, if they make a disturbance and get told to leave, and they stay, now they're trespassing.
Okay. Well, the one.
But signs do help to authorize personnel only on certain areas, and that's, it makes it a lot easier once you get to the court aspect of it.
Now, the one issue that I keep hearing about is the RV park down here by the creek. There have been numerous instances where your officers have gone down there, and you have been told that there's drug activity, or some person of interest, and they zip into one of these places, and the person that lives there says, no, I invited them, so they're not trespassing.
Not at all. The same, it's the same with apartments, Three Mount Village, all of our apartments, you'll have one bad tenant, if they're, they have the right to bring whoever they want to hang out with them. You know, I don't have the right as a police officer to tell you who you can have in and out of your house. Whether I agree with it or not, it's, you know, the home is a castle, and so.
All right. Before you draw the line, I mean, that's, somebody owns that property, there is an owner of that property that's responsible for the property, whether it's apartments.
They rent that, that space out, and as soon as you rent it out to somebody, they have more rights than the owner does.
Okay.
And so unfortunately with that, when it comes to, you know, the hard end of the law, you know, once you rent that out, now you have to follow the landlord penalty laws, the owner of the property can evict them, if they become nuisance, it's up to the owners to get them out of there.
Okay, well, thanks for that. So.
And with absentee landlords, we have a big problem with that. Compacts, that problem.
Ninety percent of the time, we have trouble, we cannot get a hold of the property owner to even start that.
Well, that's been an issue over the years, years and years and years, the absentee landlords or property owners, well, we've got a problem going on here, well, we can't get a hold of them. Who's paying the rent? They're paying the rent to somebody, you know, and we really need to address that as far as contacting these absentee property owners, because they don't care. They don't care about our town, they're, you know, they're positioned someplace in the big city, and as long as that money's coming in, they don't care about our town.
We've known that for a long, long time, it's almost impossible.
Longstanding issue.
Turn around, yeah.
There are other ways about it.
Okay, we're good with the fire chief.
Yeah, so I'll talk to you a little bit about the burn ban, so it's nice, beautiful weather, well, maybe not right now, but it has been, so as of right now, I know Zone One, which is on the east side of county, their burn ban is in effect as of today. Zone Two, which would be central county, would include, would include us in Roll Seven, we like to try to follow Roll Seven with their burn ban, makes it a lot easier on the city to try to promote that. They're looking, June first is what they're trying to shoot for, so we'll see if that happens or not.
Does that include hyper?
I believe so, because I think it's.
Just checking.
I think it's from.
It wasn't, I didn't either, the burn, this week.
Yeah, burn away. Yeah, it's really dry out there, and I, I would caution anybody that is burning. I was on a fire this weekend helping Roll Seven out with some calls, and the pile started escaping, so it's really, it's really starting to dry out really fast, so.
I've been hearing about some new state firefighter rules. I'll send them to you, because I have a feeling it's gonna be an obstacle instead of a help, but I would make sure, if you haven't seen them, you'll get them tonight.
I have, I have them too.
It didn't sound right.
Yeah.
Okay, change something a little bit, what's the latest on the DNR, or the status of this year? Have you been to any of the meetings?
I know that they, I think they're, they have one or two engines right now, and I talked to Chris Barlow today, and it sounds like June seventeenth is when they're gonna start onboarding most of the firefighters. And other than that, I don't a hundred percent know, I know they're keeping the Goldendale office here, but there's a headquarters down in Dallasport now.
That's where the helicopter's at? Or airplanes?
Yes, they have that too, they have the old school down there.
Okay.
They've turned that into their offices.
Okay, okay, good. Well, I just know, I know you work very closely with the DNR, and I just was wondering about that, so.
We'll go on now to council business, unless there's anything follow up to what we, the discussion we've had with the department, of course. And again, with the Goldendale tax increment financing feasibility analysis contract, and Pat Muntin will give us details of that.
Yeah, last week, or last council meeting, Todd Chase gave the city council, he guys tentatively gave him the go ahead, but the contract needs to be amended to extend that time. It just does not change the original cost of the contract of twenty-six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and the scope of work to be found in Exhibit A.
I moved authorize the mayor to sign the contract agreement between the city of Goldendale and Financial Consulting Solutions Group.
Do you have comments or questions before we call for a vote? And if not, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to sign the contract agreement between the city of Goldendale and Financial Consult, Financial Consulting Solutions Group Incorporated. There are no further questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion is unanimous. The next item is an exit conference from the state auditor's office. We had quite a good report there, and I think Pat or Sandy should.
Yeah.
I don't know about that, it's in the packet.
Dave was in attendance at that meeting. The, it took a long time to get there, but we were able to get it done. They added some overstatement stuff we needed to chase down, and I'm like, man, Sandy, for, that was a difficult job, and she did not give up and tracked down all those small little issues, and were able to correct them, and this is work that was done in January, from January first of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Basically, you guys can read through it, but the, what you really wanted to read is the management letter, which is the last page, on page twenty-eight, which management letters happen all the time. You know, we were preferring that, it's not finding, it's nothing, basically, it's saying tentatively, the city did nothing wrong, we just not liking how they're doing some certain things. But if you would have liked to read that, we, I always read these, and we work hard next year to try, or the next cycle, to make sure those don't happen again. But sometimes they do, and there's always little missed halves or little missed steps here or there, but as long as they don't reach the level of finding, you know, it's all pretty good shape, I, yeah, but.
One thing, I kept referring to, and I can't remember how far into it was, referring to note number one, and I never could find note number one, it referenced it more than once throughout the report.
Oh, you would need the bar's manual, to find that.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, I just looked through it, so that's, we could get you a copy of that if you want, of what that note is.
Okay.
So.
Because it referenced it a number of times.
This, we'll, we'll get you a copy of what part that note means.
Okay, and are there, are there, are you prepared to do the next item, starting this year?
No, yeah, we're not sure yet. There was a couple of things that we, we thought we were going to have to do this year, but because we haven't expended all the money at this point within the year, we're not gonna have to do a one-off audit, we can wait until next year, so. So what happens is, usually in those off years, particularly if you're, like last year, if we were doing any money that was, had federal's dollars tied to it, over, I think it's over seven hundred thousand dollars, if we spent more than seven hundred thousand dollars in federal grant money or loan money, then we have to do a one-off audit on that. So next year, we'll, we will be in our two-cycle audit period anyway, so they'll just do it at that time.
All right. Yeah, I went through it. It's lengthy, it's involved.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, basically, the financial statement was the major issue, is our, what do they call that report? Sandy, their revenue and expenditure report. It's our annual financial statement report that we have to do, the cities have to do. There was a mixed calculation in there. What caused some of that issue is when the city purchased the street sweeper and the...
Back truck.
Back truck, thank you. The city got a bond and went to, did a bond insurance on that, a bond loan. So the company that did the bond loan sent a piece of paper that was part of the record saying the money went to the city, but the money didn't really come to the city, it went directly to the, who we purchased it from. So it was messing everything up, and that's what Sandy spent a lot of time on, and tracked that down, and actually found somebody that was new there, who helped her track it down and, and correct that issue. Then, yes, the money had technically gone there, and they, they, I think they wrote you up that letter on that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's see what that could cost them.
The next item is the UNEFCO lease agreement, this is page three. Pat, did you have anything on that?
They are, this is a different group than the people that came last year, which, with WSU, they put a brother survey station out there, that triangle piece of property the city owns. They want to put a seismic monitor out there, and basically, the agreement is actually, it will cash agreement, it can be, they need a, I think, a ten by twenty foot area, if I recall right. They, yeah, so they, you know, either party can opt out at thirty days notice.
So why here? Why that location?
I can answer that.
Can I just, could you come up to the podium?
Absolutely.
Just state your name for the record.
My name is James Downey, I'm with UNEFCO. We are now Earthscope, we're part of a larger geophysical facility that does geodetic work as well as seismic, so we do all things in plate deformation, tectonics, volcanology, glaseology as well. And we have been operating a geodetic station at the observatory for fifteen years. They are expanding, and they are unfortunately expanding one of their massive buildings over our current site. And the site that we were able to move to was down the hill the wrong side in the trees, and for our monuments to work, we have to have satellite view, so we need to have sky view, and it doesn't work in that spot. So we came down this way, and this station is, so our part is geodetic, which is all plate deformation, it's how the plates move compared to each other. And then UW and WSU do the seismic aspect as well. Actually, all of us potentially just lost equipment on Mont Saint Helens in that line slide that just happened over the weekend. Yeah, pretty large slide, and so we have to head get a helicopter up there to, to assess the damages from that. But, so for this, we identified this area, the airport, or this triangular area by the water treatment facility, and they have fantastic sky view, and Larry Bellamy, the last city administrator, actually is the one that pointed this out to me last year, saying this might be an actually good spot for you. So that's why we started looking at the particular place that we're at. Yeah. And so, geodetic, it's, it's an extremely precise sub-centimeter type of a measurement. It's for the plate deformation, but it's also for soil moisture content, so you can see if the soil's drying out, you can see if there's a higher chance of wildfires. Or if there is considerable water vapor increasing quickly in the air, you can see a chance of flash flooding, that kind of thing as well. And then on the coast, not here, obviously, but on the coast, you can also see displacements in the atmosphere for tsunamis after a larger quake offshore.
That's something we all have to watch, that particular plate.
Exactly.
Glad you're here.
Thank you, I am too. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Is that information available to the city here that you?
Absolutely it is. I have some more information, and we have our website, I can leave my card as well, and it goes to our website, and it shows the actual station at the observatory, which is still live at the moment, it's on its last legs because they're about to demolish it, but you can see how that particular point on the observatory has moved over time since it has been installed, so you can see which direction it's moving, which this general area is moving northeast, and south of the Mendocino area, so San Francisco and south basically is moving pretty hard northwest, so you see a pretty big curve in how everything is moving on the west coast. It's interesting, yeah. So I will leave that information, I'll leave cards as well, and that, those websites, you can see all that.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Have any other motion on this?
I moved authorize city staff to enter into the agreement with UNEFCO.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize city staff to enter into the agreement with UNEFCO. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have one question for him, if that's okay. Are you gonna be around tomorrow?
Um, I can be.
Well, I just wonder if you want to come in and get this contract signed and?
Yeah, I can do that, that's okay. Yeah, I'll come in in the morning. You want me to leave this up now or bring it then?
You can bring it then, yeah.
Okay, great. That's what I'll do. Thank you.
Yeah, if you get here before nine o'clock, just ring the bell, and somebody else.
Okay.
Let you in.
Great.
The next item is H four, and it's the UW, University of Washington, PNSM lease agreement, and there's a motion needed, and anybody has any questions or comments, or comments from Pat to get us through, understanding?
Basically, it, they're just, they're doing the same thing they're, he's doing.
They authorized the city staff to enter into the agreement with PNSM, with the condition they see, let it they see, can only utilize a twenty by twenty area to house their seismic monitoring equipment.
Good job.
They'll move it within ninety days notice.
It's gonna be a quake, don't count in ninety days. It's been moved to authorize city staff to enter into the agreement with PNSM, with the condition they see, let it they see, can only utilize a twenty by twenty area to house their seismic monitoring equipment. We have a motion, do we have any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Last item is one that's been added, and... the mayor first can help hand me down. Do you have it?
I don't have it.
Oh, you passed it all the way down there.
Aye.
Okay, on item everybody have it. This isn't something we have to discuss tonight, everyone should be able to look at it and see the impact of it eventually. This has to do with the rules of the mayor and the city council, this has to do with the business that we do. And the reason I'm raising this point is our city manager, city administrator, Pat Munyon, in his role, he had seen these things. I'll read the first parts of it. Respecting the fundamental roles of the mayor, city council, form of government, that's what we have, is essential for developing and maintaining a cohesive team relation between the legislative and administrative branches. Working as a cohesive team, ratified by majority use, the city council establishes the primary annual priority goals and objectives of the city administration branch to achieve. So council does the legislative work, it's a job of the administration to follow the instructions or to reach those goals, whatnot. But we've had quite a few problems, it's outlined here. And it's not the end of the world, Pat, but we need to look at this and discuss it because there's some very strong statements on the job of a council member and the job and authority of a mayor. And we want to keep that straight. It's not a this or that, it's that this could greatly injure the cohesiveness of the council and its relationship with the administration. So we work effectively, we're giving it. So to give you an idea of what happens when you work together, we had a meeting last week, I believe it was Monday, it was Monday. And attending that meeting, John Anderson from the governor's office, Congressman Newhouse's staff member, Senator Cantwell's head of staff, and Senator Murray's head of staff. And we also had the Chamber of Commerce, KVH, we also had the Mid-Columbian Housing Authority, because this meeting was all on housing. Ty Ross was there to speak on his housing project. KVH Jonathan Lewis was there and Ellen Perconte was there and Bishop's company. And they have a FEMA contract and all these things play together. The thing about it and reading these, these are out of the booklets that we have, I've got a couple of them, but I can loan them to anybody or you can get them online. But this is MRSC, that is really the legal bible. City governments, I think any other one is AWC. One is for city mayors and city council. Both of them, they don't let mayors go just running off by themselves, they give them a council section too and support for us all. Because we've got to work together, we're going to achieve a thing. So I hope you'll look over this, we'll just be discussing it further at another time, but it's a subject that could impact the work of our council and our administration to work together. Cooperation always goes far further than conflict, every time. I've never seen a time that it was different. That's why I'm raising it. If anybody wants to talk about it, we can do that now or we can raise it at a later time. I'm not shy on either way. So are there any comments or questions? If not, there's no motion to make, then you don't have to skip that part, Laura. But I want you to look at it and realize how well we've worked together. That's been one of the real pleasures of the times I've been in the mayor was how cooperative and supportive the council has been. But we've run into a little bit of a problem that can be easily corrected, but we need to make sure we understand the responsibilities of the administration. Okay, the next item is report to officers. Again, the city council and I started with Andy.
It's filing week.
That's right.
It is.
Until Friday.
Until Friday the nineteenth. Good job.
Very good, very good.
That's it, tell them.
Well, that's a good one, you did understand too.
I did.
Lauren, what do you think?
I guess two things, one, I just want to express concern, I think there's a lot of things that are potentially coming in the pipe for Goldendale, potentially a lot of growth. And we have some work to do to get ready for that, you know, with our changes in ordinances and in our budget, that sort of thing. So just, you know, want to be, have that on our radar, have it on the radar for whoever's filling these chairs in the near future as well. And, you know, make myself available for workshops or the additional time that can be packed to start discussing those things. That change could start coming pretty fast if we're not prepared for it, then.
Yeah, why don't we schedule a committee meeting with the ordinance committee and start, it's a long thing, we're just going to make it.
Yeah, I want to, yeah.
My, and Elliot, Lauren.
And start later this week, early next week.
Next week, yeah, next week.
Yeah, I'm gone the end of this week. Next week.
I think next week. That'll be the week of the memorial. I will be gone that Friday.
Next week is the twenty-second to the twenty-sixth.
Oh, okay.
Memorial Day would be the last week. We're here. So.
Yeah, I'll be gone this Friday, the twenty-sixth. Yeah, I am.
So what day next week do you want to have?
Either the day Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday, wouldn't that work?
Yeah, that's, either day, yeah, I think either day would work.
So Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah. So you like yourself?
What time?
What time works for you guys?
I open after one o'clock.
Okay.
One, okay, four, I heard.
Noon? Or do lunch? Lunch provided by Elliot.
One o'clock's fine, so.
One o'clock? Four o'clock?
Four o'clock? Would that be?
Four?
See, it's twenty-fourth? Four o'clock?
Twenty-fourth at four o'clock.
Okay. Like we're in bidding wars.
The other item I had was just curiosity maybe for executive session, but we talked about some potential property sales and there was a timeline on that. Has there been any development or is it for a later discussion?
Well, I, yeah, I, they were aware of the, our counter offer, that they weren't going to, they didn't like a certain condition of the timeline to build. So they were, we gave some directions back to our realtor and, but the potential purchaser was traveling at that time. So I will call her tomorrow and see where we're at. And I know he was going to be gone for at least a two-week period.
I was just curious.
Did you say that they bailed? On the sale?
They were adding.
Oh, oh, no, they didn't bail. They didn't like a term, so we made, everything's subject coming back to the council. But you guys gave us some room to negotiate, so we made tentative counter offer to that to see if they were interested. And, but they haven't really had time to look at that counter offer because they've been traveling. They were concerned about the timeline because of the economy. You know, they wouldn't like to guarantee that timeline, but given, you know, current inflation, everything else, they just weren't they were concerned that they may not be able to do that until some of that pendulum's swinging back the other way.
Yeah. Because we've been sitting on that land for so long, I mean, what's, if we give them a little bit more, more time that they want for a deadline, I mean, what, no skin off our nose on that, why not? Or somebody goes by with a better offer? Nothing's been signed yet. Get it sold.
Other than that, out there, we've had other interesting parties, but nothing in writing.
Steve, did you have anything more?
Oh, I just had one of those, thanks, I was Hey, oh, I just wanted to say congrats to all the hard work the Chamber of Commerce did on that Home and Garden Show, man, that was the best one yet. And I noticed that the lights on the American flag out there now, thanks, appreciate that. But the one, the thing we learned, the police need keys to those gates and come in park. I didn't know that that wasn't happening. There's no way that our police officers shouldn't have access to get down into wherever they need to go in the city, so I don't know what we have to do to fix that, but we better fix that.
I think an easy solution is, I agree with Mike, sorry. I'm getting tired. Is the fence, or at least part of the fence between the two parking lots needs to be removed. People park on the other side for the little league all the time. And then at the end of the parking towards the ball fields, we need to run another fence down along there. It's just a shorter fence so vehicles can't get over onto the field. I'm thinking like a three-foot-high chain link fence or even, you know, a cable fence or something like that, stop vehicles from getting out there. But that way, Mike and the rest of the officers can get out there and turn around, I think that's a
And I'll see that, I'll see in Bridge, right?
Yeah, that's county, so there's, you know, to be able to get down by the Sengen Bridge now is, that's all county, we have no keys to that.
Okay, we need to get keys to that too.
That's county parking.
I think you'll be happy to have that.
They should, I mean, we got, you know, access to the PUD, they were really gracious to us to allow, they had problems out there.
Well, it's good for everybody to, your police officers can have access to where they need to go.
It's not only the police, fire have, we've had to go, we've had to have somebody from the pool come over, open that gate on, by the Sengen Bridge for a medical emergency down there.
Oh, we better get keys for a firefighter and two.
Cutters. And we do, we try not to damage property going in, but, you know, we, we know we didn't, we didn't even, so.
Okay. I, yeah. That's all I have, thank you, Matt.
But the fence idea, we think, phenomenal.
I'll call one of the county commissioners and see if he can talk this stuff about getting us keys.
I don't think it's a matter of not cooperating at all, I think they just didn't realize the, what they created by that gate. But I don't think they're worried about our police officers and that sort of.
Good, thank you.
Steve?
Well, I've got a couple items, but one, first one, I would like to mention that this is National Police Week and they are recognizing, in fact, there's an event this evening, I think?
There was.
Oh, it was already?
I think it was already, one of the officers there earlier.
Okay, and they're recognizing fallen officers. And, I mean, all, all of our law enforcement needs to be recognized on a regular basis and commended. But each year they add the names to a register or kind of a monument. Fallen officers, this year they're putting on five hundred and fifty-six names. And that's nothing to be proud about for sure, as far as society is concerned. But I just wanted to mention that to everybody. A couple of things, I'm kind of curious about our comprehensive plan, our overall comp plan.
For our land, comp plan?
Yes. It's, in fact, we discussed that some time ago and it needs to be updated.
Yeah, and that's part of the ordinance meeting, we talked about that comprehensive plan and how that plays into the ordinance as well. So I think that's dated 2014.
Yeah, it needs a you can only update your, so you have, we're fine because we're way over time, Mike. Under law, you can only update your comp plan once a year. So whatever we do, we want to make sure we get it right, but usually you should update your comp plan. Not, so there's a twenty-year comp plan, we're just, we should do a twenty-year update, we should do a five-year update. It just, what we're, what we're doing is checking off those goals and objectives. Which ones have we accomplished, which ones have we not? And, or how's the city trending now compared to what it was trending at? And what modifications do we need to make for those modifications? Do we need to be less restrictive or do we need to be more stricter on land use activities? And that's really, you know, up to the city. I think the charming thing about, I find about seeing Goldendale versus other cities in the county is you go to the west side, you got, you know, even though they're small cities, they're building on top of each other. Goldendale's state spread out, lots of nice open space, nice sized lots. I think that makes for a better environment for a community and not trying to turn a small city, and this is just my personal opinion, into downtown Vancouver, Portland, where everybody's stacked on top of each other. And I find that's a good way to go.
I wasn't trying to snap anything there, anything, but.
No, that's what brought me to council, was that issue right there. And there's integratives between our ordinances and our comp plan, too small lots being placed out there in areas where it shouldn't be, so.
And, and
Couple of years later, maybe we'll finally get it fixed.
And the comp plan is essential to, like some of the issues we dealt with tonight. When we're trying to skewer funds for development and what have you for the city, that's one of the first things they'll ask you, well, what's your comp plan look like? How current is it?
Well, to be more direct of what Lauren is getting at, is the comp plan, clearly, what is that? Broken, relevant, essential, or, well, under the comp plan, since they're supposed to be twenty thousand square foot lots, well then if you go into the municipal code, it says twenty thousand square foot lots, it can be reduced to ten thousand square foot lots if you tie in the water, city water sewer. So there again, the ordinance, because we're a code city, is going to rule on the comp plan most of the time. You know, so we have to base our land use decision on what the ordinance says, but we need to back up and go back into the comp plan and say, was that really the intent? Is that what we really want to allow? You know, that's something later on that, you know, you guys can go back and address as the city community grows, but is it really something you want to address at this time? I'm talking about smaller lots.
And I think our vision going forward is going to be a lot different now than it was in 2014, just with so many things happening around this point, so.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, absolutely.
Okay, thanks for the response, very good. And one of the other items, well, Pat already covered it. Very, very well done with the old cleanup portion that you mentioned tonight, a major improvement.
Yeah, we're, we still need to go in and modify some of our codes, but, and that's something we can talk about the Earth Committee too, but I'm really interested in working with this gentleman from Clickdawg County that spoke here tonight with the senior services. I think that will be a great asset and it might be something that, you know, for the city, maybe if they're helping us clean up some of these code enforcement issues, is to donate some money to them. Because if they don't clean it up, in most cases, we're going to end up cleaning it up, we're going to end up, they're We're going to end up, they're probably not going to pay it and then we're going to get a lien on the property and then we're going to spend a lot of money on legal attorney fees and everything else. If we can work with them and say, hey, we're willing to, you know, every time you help us clean something up, give them a certain donation amount, that's going to be a lot cheaper for the city to achieve code enforcement in this town than trying to do it the other way. Because right now, we can only buy it off so much a year and then we're out of money. And if we want to continue throughout the year, we need programs like this to help us and make it work financially.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just one more thing, six-year street plan?
Yes.
Where's that at?
On my desk.
So is our...
Your changes are in there.
I know it's still there.
Yes.
Okay.
We need to have that, okay, this, we can, everybody has it on the council, we can work on it and get it achieved.
Right.
Whenever meeting is, we can go faster.
Right, right. Well, I noticed there was two projects on there for 2023 and I don't think they're going to happen.
Well, yeah, everything you put on those plans never happens in the scheduled time. So in anything you put as your number one priority, number two priority, it all comes about funding available and grant opportunities that we can get for that particular project. You know, small cities cannot survive with street improvements out of pocket. We have to rely on transportation improvement grants, which is 95% grants, or we can't achieve these projects.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anyway, thank you.
Myland?
Well, thank you, Barry. Just to continue the conversation that you previously mentioned about the meeting we had last week, when we met with our congressional staff people and the governor's office and we talked about the housing and the airport and I think we're, we're going to be meeting again later on. We don't have no dates yet, but continue this contact information and give a word out on what projects we're, we're working on. So anyway, I think, I think it's a positive that we're doing this and we're off to a good start and we'll think we're doing, so.
Since I was also going to talk about the airport, we've worked with US Representative, the governor's office, applying for a 4.12 million dollar grant. I've been contacted by Cantwell's office and Newhouse's office and it's been approved, it's in the list of considerations, along with a bridge between, across, across from, oh, good grief.
Indian Head River? Indian Head River?
No, they're right, right, our, I hate that.
Alspur?
No, it's, it's further, not Alspur, but...
Oh, you mean Hood River Bridge?
That Hood River Bridge is a massive project. It's on that same list with our airport, 4.4 million. The reason we're pushing for this airport is whenever there's any kind of big disaster of any kind, far beyond the city limits of Goldendale, we have a responsibility, 100% responsibility for the safety response, emergency response, all of that. That is exactly it. And when, with this plan for airport, we're talking about cooperation from FEMA for emergencies. They might have Red Cross, DNR, of course, and some other ones. But the thing is, these are all emergency situations where we don't have enough law enforcement, enough fire department, enough anything, even including ambulances, to cover it ourselves. So this is the thing of emergency preparation. That's why we're pushing so hard for this airport. We had two actions tonight on the problems with geological transfers and movements of place and things like that, earthquakes. These are the things that seem to be increasing. We don't want to be sitting here wondering whether we should do something, we need to do it. So that's, that's why, and Myland has been an incredible, hardworking fellow, giving me these people, because we had, we had all four of them, Murray, Cantwell, Newhouse and the governor's offices. And they all were listening and they all asked if they might come back again, they were quarterly. It's not just all there, goes another old regional town or some little rural podunk. They're listening, they're following, they know a lot of things are happening in Goldendale for one thing. They're very, very interested in all the impact of the bomb storage for one and a number of other big projects. These are county projects, but very often they've got our name on top of it. And there's not any other Golden Dale in the country. So keep that in mind too. But that was, that was my path on talking about city administration, administrator. Did you have additional things you wanted to include?
No, I kind of went through it all.
Okay, good. I just, I listed it there, I wasn't sure where we wanted to go. Well, the next item is the open public comments, if anyone here or on the line for public comments, I think we might have some.
Anybody online for, no, no public comment?
But our audience is getting bigger. Good. And if there are no further public comments here in the council chamber, pardon me, if anyone will call for a motion to make.
Some movement.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
How are you doing, sir?
Recording?